I'd like to call this regular meeting of council of Monday, May 25th to order. I'd like a motion from council to amend the agenda regarding two late items. One being a press release of an in-camera item. And the second being a resolution for making application to the Western Diversification Grant recently announced.
So moved.
About a second. All in favor? Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. As amended.
So moved.
Second? All in favor? So carried. I'd like council to adopt the May 4th committee of the whole meeting minutes as presented. Counselor Butler, Counselor Roshigan. All in favor? So carried. Again, I would like council to adopt the May 4th public hearing minutes as presented.
So moved.
Counselor Roshigan, Counselor Hammond, all in favor? So carried. I'd like council to adopt the May 4th regular meeting minutes as presented.
So moved.
Counselor Crowe, Counselor Roshigan. All in favor? So carried. I would like council to adopt the May 7th special meeting to go-in camera minutes as presented.
Second?
Thompson. All in favor? So carried. And on the minutes, I'd like council to adopt the May 7th special meeting minutes as presented. Counselor Roshigan. Counselor Thompson. All in favor? We'll now move on to all the written reports from members of council to be received.
I'll make sure you receive your reports.
Do I have a second, Counselor Ross? Counselor Butler.
Discussions?
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Within my report, and I'm sorry, my microphone's not working. I had a motion written down, and I'll just read it out. It's just in regards to some concerns I had from residents with spraying in the area. The motion states, "Whereas the community charter, Section 8, 3i, and 64c, gives council the authority to regulate public health in the emission of smoke, dust, gas, sparks, ash, soot, cinders, fumes, or other effluva that is liable to foul or contaminate the atmosphere. Therefore be it resolved that council direct staff to investigate if there's any risk to schoolchildren, hospital patients, or the city well in relation to conventional farming practices, including spraying of herbicides and pesticides that have recently commenced on the border of the school playground and hospital. And that staff advise council if there's any remedial action that may be undertaken." Just to speak to this.
Yes, Secretary.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'm just making a comment in regards to my report. Just within the report, it stated that I have talked with the school principal down at Hutton, and I've talked with the school board with concerns that have been brought to me. And they have tried to look into it a little bit. There hasn't been that much information brought forward. But I just think it's important that we take a proactive approach to this to make sure that we protect any of the students from spraying in the area if they're in school at that time. They're also wondering if they had to wipe down playground equipment if it was sprayed afterwards. At this point, the spraying doesn't seem to have come right up to the border.
Mr. Mayor, I believe you have this probably a second here. I think we're going into full discussion here. That was a motion.
Do we have a second? Counselor Crowe? This is now discussion.
Okay, so, continue. Okay. Also, with regards to the drilling of a new city well in the area, I'd just really like to see that our water reports are testing that's done. Just be checked to see if there is any residual showing up in the wells from, and to find out exactly what's being sprayed and how often. And if there's any way that we can just work with the farmer. And I'm totally in favor of having farming on that land. It might be questionable, the way we set up our zoning to have it right next to a school. But I think it'd just be good to monitor this situation and work with the farmer to see if there's any way that we can just mitigate any of the effects that might come from that practice.
Counselor Butler.
Yeah, I'd second it for discussion because, yeah, it needs to be looked into. I'm just concerned about the actual wording of the motion where it says that we direct staff to investigate if there's any risk to schoolchildren, hospital. I don't think our staff has that expertise. And then it says, "They advise us as to any remedial action that may be undertaken." So again, I don't think that we have the expertise to ask. Now, if it was something like, or to investigate and recommend what needs to be done. I believe it's obviously, it's a private company. But if, you know, it was asking that the city inquire about what they're spraying, right? But what this actually says is that they're going to investigate it and the health ramifications. That's not what our staff is there for. But if it's just a simple, can we contact the owner, request, what is it? And, you know, is there any concerns?
Counselor Roshigan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I definitely agree with the intent here. And I agree with everything that was said by Counselor Crowe. There do I have a couple of concerns. I feel it's worth looking into. However, I feel that this is the wrong level of government to be doing it at. I believe this should be at the school board level as they are themselves an elective official body. Area D kids go to Hutton School. The City of Grand Forks kids go to Hutton School. Both of those through taxation, pay for that service, pay for the school board, pay for their employees, pay their stipend. And so what we're saying is that we, as a city, should pay for this investigation just the residents of the City of Grand Forks, even though what happens on that field affects individuals, not just in the city, but also children from outside the city that attend that school. So I feel it belongs at the school board level, in my opinion.
Counselor Ross.
I have my hand. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see if this works. Where I also, I'm an organic farmer, so I think I'm very much in, obviously concerned about the use of pesticides and herbicides and fungicides being used in our food system and spreading throughout our atmosphere. But I'm even more concerned with conventional gardening. The amount of pesticides and herbicides that are being used in the city, in people's yards, I think far exceeds the amount of chemicals that is used in agriculture within the city. And unless we're going to follow the example that cities such as Ottawa have created a policy where Ottawa is a spray-free zone, where they have outlawed the use of chemicals and fertilizers for cosmetic purposes to be used on lawns and gardens and in the city. I think that would be more, I think that is where we have to start fully looking at real problems. Because those kids go home, and I bet you a dozen that their parents are using Roundup and Weed and Feed and many other products that are highly carcinogenic and endanger to children. So although I think that the intent of this resolution is important, I think it's, we need to go after gardeners before we go after the farmers.
Thanks. I just wanted to state that the intent of asking staff to look into remedial action was just in regards to what we can do here as a city council on a local level, what our abilities and powers, how far we can go. Because I didn't have a chance to read the whole Right to Farm Act. I intended to, but didn't get it done. But I realized that the Right to Farm Act does give farmers the ability to do use conventional practices. But on a local level, are there things that we can do within our powers to, like I said, to mitigate it? Can we just ask them to spray on the weekends, make sure they don't spray when it's windy? Ask that the school be notified before spraying happens? Just that type of thing. That's just the information I'd like to get from staff.
Counselor Hammond.
I agree with the concept and the problem and the concern. But I would suggest also that because the field of question backs onto our hospital, that interior health may take an active role in this because they have a big stake.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we haven't had any requests from any other levels of government, so the school district hasn't reached out to us to act on in this respect. I understand that the council's been meeting with them. But the information should come in the form of writing from the school district board to our board to talk about this request. And further, that the Farm Act is the review that a farmer is not liable to nuisance to any person. This is an excerpt from the Farm Act, that a farmer is not liable in any nuisance to any person or any odor, noise, dust, or other form of disturbance resulting in farm operation. Further, that they're meant to conform to the Local Government Act, the Fisheries Act, the Public Health Act, Integrated Pest Management Act, and the Environmental Act, and any other sort of land use regulation. So, Mr. Mayor, there is a lot to go through in this. This will not just be a piece of junk, but it would be more appropriate for it to come in from the school district and to enter into some consultations and group discussion to enter, to have those conversations with them. So we'd better pin that on our.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that this is an important issue, and certainly while worth being considered. But I agree that the issue as it relates to the schoolchildren needs to be addressed by the school board. And the hospital and patients in the hospital should be dealt with either through their own staff or the IHJ board. And I can see the city having some type of a role, but I don't believe that it's appropriate that we be the front and center in leading these discussions. But I do thank Counselor Butler for bringing this to our attention.
All in favor of the motion? Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a result of my own report to council and my council report, and as a result of the correspondence we've been receiving over a long period of time, I also have a couple of motions I'd like to present to council this evening, if you may. I move that the corporation of Grand Forks does not support the commodification or the privatization of its water.
Do I have a second there? Counselor Thompson. And a discussion? All in favor? So carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I have that floor again? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a follow-up resolution, please. Whereas a corporation of Grand Forks does not support the commodification or the privatization of its water, therefore be it resolved that the corporation of Grand Forks will not purchase bottled water in individuals serving size bottles.
Do I have a second on that motion? Counselor Butler. Any discussion, debate? Counselor Crowe.
No, actually, I don't have any debates. So my world's cheapest dog toy is? Seriously, bottled water for a dog is fine. Half freezing, never mind. No, I'm good with it. I like it.
So all in favor? So carried.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to the verbal report from our council representative.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we still have to vote on the receipt.
Oh, sorry, yeah, the receipt. Is there any other motions wanting to be made while we have the written reports? No? Okay, so all in favor of the reports? Be received. So carried. As I was saying, we now move on to the verbal reports from our council representative to the RDKB. Counselor Crowe.
There is no report at this time as there's been no meetings as most of the board was off the AKBLG and other meetings. So I don't have a report. Speaker? They don't have a report. That's where no meetings, so. My microphone's down, by the way.
May I have a motion to receive the no report?
Oh, receiving the no report.
Yeah, a second. Counselor Thompson. No discussion or debate, I would imagine. So all in favor? So carried. Thank you for the no report.
It was fabulous.
The detail was incredible.
Recommendations from staff for decisions. We have a proposed council technology allowance policy. And like a motion for council to determine 115 as presented. Counselor Thompson.
I would bring forward an amendment to this policy. And that amendment would be that at the beginning of the term of office of a new council, that an allowance of up to $2,000 be given. Help me with the appropriate wording.
Allowance.
A one-time allowance of up to $2,000 to purchase laptop or computer with an option for members of council and individual members of council to opt out if they so choose or to keep on using a city-issued computer. The reason I'm, hold on, I need a second here. The reason I'm making this recommendation is that the recommended policy allows $500 per year, per annum. And you really can't buy much of a computer for $500. So conceivably, a council could accept on an annual basis that $500 and at the end of their term walk away with $2,000 without ever having purchased a computer. The, you can buy something for under $2,000 and you can buy something for more than $2,000. But upon receipt of your acquisition, the council member would be reimbursed, either for the cost or up to the $2,000 maximum.
Discussion or debate? Counselor Crowe.
Oh, just a comment. When I'm looking at the policy and the $500 per year, and the comment that at the end of the term, you could walk away with without purchasing a computer, but still getting the money, but that's taken care of. It says if a member of council chooses to use an existing city computer, there is no annual allowance that would be given to that duration. So I'm just clarifying that.
Yeah.
Because it sounded like, okay.
Counselor Hammond.
Mr. Mayor, through you, maybe we can get some clarification on why this was brought forward?
Sure. One of the things that we're talking about in our asset management policy is not having to purchase as many computers throughout the, throughout our organization. Look at this, it's better for us to simply not own the asset. It can be more beneficial to the city to not have to advertise those assets over life expectancy as we're required to inventory everything according to PSA 3150 and then advertise it over the life expectancy. We're trying to bring our $127 million value down as a community so we don't have these additional assets. So every little bit helps. So it's being consistent with our asset management.
Counselor Roshigan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm understanding your resolution correctly. You're stating that as opposed to $2,000 coming to each council that are to be used towards a computer, possibly offset internet fees, connection fees of those sorts. It would be the council purchases the computer, then submits it to the city, then gets reimbursed off to $2,000?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Hammond.
I'd like to just comment on that is the fact that the purchasing of the computer is just the beginning, because then there's maintenance of that computer. And there's also, we're required to have high-speed internet and the connections. So that will go on for the duration of the four years. And when you determine the cost of internet, I think we worked it out to something like $3,600 over the course of two years.
Would it be better if council later referred this issue to a later date so we can discuss it from, make a decision this evening?
Sure.
Counselor Butler. Counselor Roshigan.
We're in referral motions, there's no discussion.
No, wait a minute.
Counselor Roshigan.
Did you want to make that?
No.
Okay, I'll move to table it to a later date. To a later date. Discussion.
All in favor? Next item is the proposal to set up a steering committee regarding transitional housing. That council authorizes staff to proceed with the setting up of a transition housing project steering committee, THPSC, and that the THPSC provide assistance and recommendations to council regarding steps necessary to facilitate the development of transitional housing in the community. Yes. We have a presentation.
Dave Smith is.
Mr. Dave Smith will be doing the presentation. Come forward, Dave.
Wherever you're comfortable, Dave. I mean, normally we have a little bit more room than this, so wherever you. Do you want to come right up here? Do you want to come right up here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to be here to assist Grand Forks with the transitional housing issue. And I hope I'm able to work this thing, you know, just. Okay, so you have a motion that is put before you and you have a report in the council agenda with respect to report. So I hope to give a brief presentation to just give you a little more detailed background and better understanding of where the recommendation came from. Oh, I'm backwards there. Okay, Grand Forks, the issue of homeless individuals is apparent. And this is a quote from one of the studies that was done in the past saying that social service agencies, the RCMP, churches, concerned citizens, politicians, and other individuals and organizations have been aware of growing numbers of homeless people in the boundary. And we're all aware of what that looks like and the challenges of finding comfortable housing for people in this situation. And the causes of homelessness are many and varied. And some are insufficient affordable housing, low incomes, mental health, or substance abuse issues, family conflict, violence, job loss, inadequate discharge planning, i.e., ex-offenders, people suffering from mental illness, youth leaving the care of the child welfare system. So there could be a wide range of reasons with people that have this support. So the definition of homeless then are any individual at risk who are in need of a safe environment, and then they are considered homeless. And they are any individuals or families living in public spaces without legal claim, which could be streets, abandoned buildings, tent cities, near the land of bridges in various places, and who cannot return to a stable residence. So I mean, we may want to say, maybe we should just regulate the situation and it will go away. And some cities have tried that. No smoking, littering, picking flowers, gambling, spitting, hand handling, whatever. But practice has shown that this just doesn't work. So where do we go from here? Governments have been involved with the issue of homelessness and housing in general. And the province, BC Housing in particular, has a particular involvement with homeless issue over the last number of years. The province works in partnership with local communities, federal government, and nonprofit providers to develop new housing options with integrated support services to help individuals who are homeless or at risk and move beyond temporary shelter to more secure housing and gain greater self-reliance. There's only limited funds available at the province, but if you put together a good case for it, there may be some funding available. So the housing spectrum in dealing with the homeless issue, there are emergency shelters, there are transitional shelters, which are more for an intermediate period of time and not just for, you know, a few days to get over a crisis, and supportive housing for the longer term. Now, aside from the provincial government, the federal government has CMHC, Canada Mortgage and Housing. And they have also assistance that they can provide. CMHC works in partnership with local communities, provinces, and nonprofit providers to develop new housing options for those on lower incomes. And they provide two-stage funding, seed funding and project development funding. Funding go in from the federal government is generally from more permanent supportive types of housing, such as families or seniors, lower-income families, First Nations. And the criteria they use across the board would be if anyone is spending more than 30% of their income on housing, then they're probably struggling somewhat and could be looked at for housing project assistance. And the key thing here is that CMHC, in moving forward, want a business case put to before they give any money or move forward. And that is the case for BC Housing also. A business case must be established. And BC Housing would like a site selected with community support and partnerships established that the community is comfortable moving forward with. And I had some considerable discussions with both these agencies as I'm doing for research. So can appropriate housing be found? And there are many examples across the province where communities have been able to pull off some very nice projects in this regard, either in older buildings fixing them up or building right from a vacant site and building up from there. So you have a recommendation before you to set up a steering committee. And that would be, that committee should have a mandate such that it would evaluate site options, form an appropriate partnership to manage the project, provide a step-by-step process of recommendations to council for the development of approvals that would be required. And I anticipate that if you move forward with a project like this, there'll be a number of steps that you'll have to take with council and council will have to say yes, no, or yes, but we'd rather do this, that, or the other. And of course, that committee would help to build that business case. So once these things are done and it's put together, then you could go forward with, I'm thinking probably BC Housing, but potentially if it's more permanent housing, there may be a role to play at CMHC as well. And I'm going backwards here, so. So there's already a number of stakeholders that are involved with the issue of homeless people, low-income people. You have the EWRS, Extreme Weather Response Shelter, that's Boundary Emergency Transition Housing. Mentioned BC Housing and CMHC and City of Grand Forks, of course. And MAPS have been available to, or set up to organize various people together, Whispers of Hope, the Hot Meals, Restore from Habitat, Community Futures, the RCMP. And of course, this is largely a downtown issue. So the downtown business people also could be involved as important stakeholders here. So what's our roadmap for moving forward? It would be, it's always nice if you can move forward step by step in a very orderly manner and feel good about the decision that you're making. And right now, we're at the first box on the left, I would suggest, discussing the roadmap. The recommendation to form this committee and move forward and to report and study site selection, work with stakeholders, and involve BC Housing and CMHC as to how you're moving forward. And then the project initiation could embody the site selection, the partnership. And then the project initiation could embody the site selection, the partnerships in the project. And then moving forward with an application to proceed with senior housing authority assistance. And how does the overall process proceed? Right now, again, in the left-hand side, we're assessing this project. The alternatives would be to just approve a project without a lot of study, which may be premature, or just throw it out the window without any study, but we're suggesting that this would be a more rational approach to do the good study. So we do the project assistance. Then there are the administrative steps that would be necessary, as mentioned, step by step as part of the recommendation. So with planning approvals, there may be different development permits, rezonings, whatever is involved that would be necessary to come forward with, project sponsors, the property transfer and the transfer to the appropriate sponsor, I would assume, the mortgage, insurance, all those kinds of administrative details. The next step would be to move forward with the project as an RFP, perhaps through a tender process. Or there's another process, design-build, but you have to follow the legal way of doing that, the community charter and so forth. And you may, and also what would BC Housing and CMHC require? If they accept design-build, that may be an option, but if they don't, then it wouldn't, so that would have to be sorted out. And then upon doing that and determining who's going to build the project and so forth, then construction and development can take place. So as part of that process that I outlined, that roadmap, would suggest that through the committee there, that there would be a really thorough workshop that would take place. In my discussions with both BC Housing and CMHC, they suggested that they would be available to come to Grand Forks and be available for a workshop and discuss the various aspects of the project and see how they could fit in with it or how it could unfold and perhaps give some guidance as to which grants and so forth that would be available. So in this workshop, stakeholders will be consulted and will be invited, of course, with the committee. And the workshop agenda would form a partnership, perhaps MAPS is stuff I think I believe. But that or some other arrangement as would be determined. And collaboration on site selections, available options will take place. And the outcome of this hopefully would be a unified approach to council for support and approval. Timing, I don't know what happened to me, but it kind of got by a little too quick. So I think we'd have to move those bars over a little bit a month. But in essence, I think, you know, by October, this could be, could be all figured out. And if we're lucky, maybe sooner, but you know how things go with dealing with governments and committees and so forth. We'll take it a step by time and try to follow a timeline at least as best as possible. So here's my friend. And hard work, determination, sound planning on a suitable site, partnerships, involvement with government, community support and leadership, we can achieve a successful project in Grand Forks. Thank you. Any questions?
Any discussion of the Councilor Shigal?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just, first off, wanted to say that's a fantastic tie.
Hong Kong.
Oh, there you go. Secondly, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. It was very clear, very concise, and I certainly appreciate your approach to this process and how you went out in a very simple to understand format. With that being said, I would like to make the motion that not just to receive your presentation, but also recommend that council authorize staff to proceed with setting up a transition housing project steering committee and that the THPSC provide assistance and recommendation to council regarding steps necessary to facilitate the development of transition housing in the community.
Yes, thank you. I think it's an excellent recommendation also. And public consultation will be part of the committee's terms of reference, I would hope.
I see the workshop as being a major part of it. I see the workshop as being open to those who would like to attend. But the committee would be the filtering process through to council as to the outcome of that show and various deliberations that the committee does.
But the public will have an opportunity to be heard.
Definitely. That's the, that's buffering committee staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also concur. I think it'd be great to set up a committee to look into this, but I just wanted to make sure that we mentioned the Women's Transition House and the excellent work that they do in the community and that they also be made a part of this process.
Councilor Shigal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not too sure if you can answer, or if your CEO can, in terms of financial, the financials of this report. It says costs are not determined at this time, but it is anticipated that there will be financial slash asset contributions by the city for the development of transition housing in the community. If a project is to proceed, what kind of cost would the city cover the cost of the business case? What are these potential costs?
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The costs right now are being absorbed within the organization because we currently have an employee off that Mr. Smith is filling in for in this respect. At the end of the day, the, all those project costs would be provided to the committee, and the committee would make recommendations coming forward. So we wouldn't know yet if it was simply a component of land that they recognized or if the committee recognized. In the past, the committee recognized a site out near the hospital as a building, but it was, the costs were too high at that point. Well, I shouldn't say that. There was other components to that project that were related to it that made it not feasible. But this will, this will allow all the groups to work together. So those costs would be, you saw the increments and how the report would be brought forward in the green boxes. It would allow council then that time to consider those pieces to continue, to either continue on or to step back from it. But for those point, the costs aren't necessarily determined yet.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? So all in favor of the vote? So carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is our manager of Development and Engineering Services. The topic is...
Pickleball.
Pickleball. Pickleball in Grand Forks converting one tennis court at Barbara Ann Park into four pickleball courts. And the recommendation is the council select one of the listed options. So may I have the options from our... ...manager of Development and Engineering. Where are the options?
There's two options.
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor. After the March ninth regular meeting... Sorry. We went ahead and advertised in the Gazette to get to obtain public feedback on repurposing one of the tennis courts. And we advertised for three weeks, and we received quite a few emails. When the pickleball people did their presentation originally at the committee of the whole, they brought in twelve letters of support in favor of repurposing the courts. Once we advertised, we received five more in favor, and then we also received four against. We also did some research with contacting the city of Trail to find out if they also repurposed one of their courts. And the cost of them repurposing their courts was a total of forty-five thousand dollars. However, they... It was a step process between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and fourteen. And what council there did is they made a decision to proceed with the repurposing the court, but they asked the pickleball community to come up with some of the funding. So that was in two thousand and twelve. In two thousand and thirteen, the pickleball community was able to obtain funding from the Ombudsman's Trust, CUNY Savings and Tech, and the city basically covered the rest of the project and managed the project as it went through. So we're offering three options here. The first one is to resurface, crack seal one entire court. It is a cost of thirty-two thousand one hundred and forty-nine. However, can you move to the next two? If we two, the reason why they chose this layout is because the courts are east-west, and sometimes during the day, the sun's not in the proper location. So they decided to have the courts located this way. If you go to the next one. This is how Trail did theirs. If you go back. So if we went with this original, or this layout that they've asked for, we'd have to put some netting in between those four courts and the existing tennis court, which would be an additional cost of thirty-two thousand dollars that are shown. Trail spent about eight thousand putting up a net between those, so that would be, you know, more than forty at the end of the day. Option number two just involves the repainting of those four courts. Again, if we were to put that net down the middle, that would be an additional cost of seventy-two hundred and fifty-six dollars. Option three is to leave it status quo. The lines that are painted there are in pretty good shape. Or you could have an option four, which is to, you know, agree to proceed that by having the pickleball people come up with some funding for...
Question, was Barbara Ann Park, is that city-owned?
Yes.
What was the quad tennis courts on boundary behind secondary school? Is that the city?
That's the school.
Second district? Was there any approach made to that somehow in conjunction? Because there's always four courts that are definitely never used. Could it be working conjunction with the school board?
From what I understand, the reason why they approached us regarding Barbara Ann Park is most, or from what I understand, most of the tennis players play up at the high school, and that Barbara Ann doesn't get used. That's kind of why they chose Barbara Ann.
But they only use half of the ones behind that high school, and the other four are always empty, so... Councilor Croft?
Yeah, a question to you, to staff. It says repurpose one court with portable net system. So that's not the dividing net?
No.
So then with the dividing net, it would be closer to fifteen thousand? Those are just the portable nets that go in between? I just want to make sure that was...
Can you go with that? I guess, Mr. Mayor, it has... So the portable nets would be in each actual court, but then there would have to be a huge net between the four courts and the tennis court.
And that's not encompassed in the seven thousand?
No, that would be the extra. You know, between eight and ten thousand.
Question to our CEO, how does that encompass our grant policy?
Mr. Mayor, these types of projects are, you know, they're, you know, they're being more traditionally defined as, if this is a community request at this point. When we get into, the council gets into a more thoughtful process on recreation master planning in the community because the needs of the community are constantly evolving. This, when we built tennis courts at the time, it was because we felt as though there was a need for tennis courts. Now we're in a position where we have a need for pickleball, and that will change as the demographics change. From our, from our point of view right now, the, dealing with this is a, is a community need. We've heard from the community in that respect. So I think it's, if I'm answering your question, Mr. Mayor, have I answered your question?
Partially.
Partially? So...
People saying that there are mild heat in the door.
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess, is that sufficient?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
I don't know if it really...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I personally think this would become a public good. I don't think it's a grant aid. I think any opportunity for us to develop and enhance our recreation services within this community to provide recreational opportunities that are free, that keep kids and adults active outside, I think it would absolutely benefit to all of us here in this committee. I think at this point in time, I'm definitely in favor of it, but I would like to see option two be brought to the table and see how that went first. It is a lower cost. It gives them the four courts to begin with. And with that, I will move option two, repurpose one court as four pickleball courts with portable net systems at an approximate cost of seven thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars.
So I can amend it?
The only other thing we have to do is amend the financial plan to include that cost.
Because the seven thousand wouldn't be...
It wouldn't have been much at this year.
And because we need the big net up there.
Yeah.
So do we know the costs of separating net between the four pickleball courts and the tennis court?
In two thousand, yes, Mr. Mayor, in two thousand and twelve, City of Trail paid around eight thousand. So, I mean, this is three years later.
Or about sixteen, seventeen thousand. Who would be maintaining the equipment? Would that be the city's responsibility? Councilor Croft?
Yeah, I seconded the motion, so I can amend it. And that would be, I do agree that any recreational opportunities are awesome. And the cost to convert the four things for the seven thousand plus dollars, I totally agree with. I would like to propose an amendment that we proceed with that and that we then look at the pickleball people to actually provide the net. So we've done, as something separate, that we're not buying the fifty or the eight thousand dollar net, but we'll put this in, and they can fundraise or whatever to actually put in the net. So that's what I would like to see is an amendment that we fund it, that they take part in it.
Our manager, Mr. Mayor, seven thousand, is that just for resurfacing, or does it includes the four nets?
Mr. Mayor, option two includes pickleball line painting, the portable pickleball net system and a storage unit. There's no resurfacing, crack sealing, anything.
Okay, so then, Councilor Croft's question, what kind of cost would we be offering?
No, not those nets, sorry. Clarification, extra net that's not included in that.
Separater net.
Yes, the separator net. So we'll go forward with this, and the user groups can...
Yep.
Fund the extra net.
Because I wasn't in there anyway in the seven thousand, the separator net, that would have been optional.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a very good point. And we could also move forward with the premise that we could configure the courts in one direction without the separating net, and if they want to fundraise, to have the nets configured in the other direction, that's their prerogative, do so.
Councilor Croft?
Yeah, I guess the only reason I wanted to tag that other net onto there was that we spend this money to do that, and then they say they don't want it because there's no net. Right? So it would be, we'll do this if they do that contingent type thing. But that new thing makes a little bit more sense. But we'll have already done it. Whatever.
Councilor Croft?
Just another couple of pieces of the puzzle. I went down to the courts the other day and took a look around, and the tennis, there's now a tennis association that's formed, and they're going to be having lessons down there, and they've got it advertised, so I'm not sure if they're one of the people that responded to the city. I didn't see a letter. Also, the cracks in the court are quite large, and there's grass growing up in between them, so it is unfortunate. I mean, that crack ceiling's expensive, but at some point, it does look like it will need to be done.
It's all right.
Yeah, just to add.
Did you want to make that amendment then?
If.
You want to?
If, as was pointed out, which is correct, that it doesn't include the net in the motion. So technically, I wouldn't have to amend it.
Yeah.
But what if no net ever goes up?
Here's a question to our manager of engineering. What is to say that if we opt for option two, that they even accept that? Do we have any commitment from them on the basis that they realize we have three options? Or are we, again, as my Councilor Croft stated, go down that path? Or are we, again, which my councilor Crox stated, go down that path and then they say, oh, no, we don't want that? Where are we with the pickleball group? Are we just spinning? Are we missing?
Is there anybody from the pickleball group here?
He tried to get in, but the door was, was closed.
Mr. Mayor, um, we can, uh, because this was a, uh, if I could, if this, this, because this is a re, a relatively recent request. Um, if we haven't referred it to the pickleball group, I think one of the things that the council wanted to, to ask staff to then now sit down with them and figure out if this configuration will work. I completely, Sasha made a refer this. Do you refer this off to the pickleball groups?
I would recommend that we send you back to staff for more consultation and bring it to a committee of the whole meeting, or we can have them present themselves for the regular meeting.
Based on the, based on what we have today.
Based on what we have today and so on, these to them, they may say, nade all three.
And they might have funding coming in from the regional district as well, we don't know.
Or they may have another plan altogether, which they say, well, we're gonna provide this, all you guys gotta do is this. So, I think it'd be more pertinent that we leave this alone for the season.
Do we have to file any motion and, and review it?
Yeah, so the motion that's on the table to select an option, we can defeat it and then make a motion to refer it to our staff.
Yeah, or we can just refer that motion to a meeting.
Well, if I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I, I personally want to see this move forward. I think we're splitting hairs over seven thousand dollars right here. We spent more money on getting options on a report for permanent systems and didn't discuss it at all. And here we are, you know, batting this around part of the pie. Um, and, and, and this is more for the public good right now at this point in time. Uh, it, it, to, to me, it's just something that, you know, back and forth, back and forth. They, they did their presentation, they made their case, um, and, and, and.
I did made no commitments. They haven't made no commitments. We're making a commitment, but they haven't made one.
Yeah, I know, I, I appreciate that, I understand that, Mr. Mayor, but at the same time, it's, you know, to the baseball people when they came here, asked for James Johnson Park, or they asked for Dick Bartlett Park, and, you know.
Well, the reason I stated that because it was based on the council of Crox's suggestion that if we go this far, who knows then what's gonna be next, or they may not want it. This is what spurred on this. Councilor Hemmer?
Yes, and that, I was just gonna say that because in light of the information that Mr., um, Council Worshing mentioned about the state of the, uh, the court and, uh, the gap, or, or Council Butler and the gap sitting there, um, option two may not be acceptable by that group anyway. So if we pass the motion to spend that money and they say, well, it's in too need of, it, it's, it's in too disrepair to, to use. I'd rather consult with them to make sure that this is actually what they want first with that direction, and they know that they're not getting the separator net.
They're on the same page.
Uh, if, if, if I may, I spent six years on a recommission as the vice president of it, and, uh, when they made a presentation to us, they asked for four courts, just for one court to be moved over. So I'm sure they are well aware of the condition of that court when that's all they were asking for at the recommission level. At which point, we, we recommended they come to us because it's city property, so I don't know, you know, this didn't happen overnight, this people have to some time. And, and, like I say, um, a motion to refer just, just delays it, and, uh, I would like to see us move forward with it. However, um, yeah, this concern council, and if you go in that direction, I will be putting against the, for motions.
So our initial, Councilor Thompson?
Uh, I hear what, what Council Worshing is saying, but if we're gonna make that kind of a commitment. I think it has to be something that the group wants and that's going to work for them as well as for the city, and, and, um, I don't know if, if, if it's appropriate for me to make the motion to refer this to the next committee of the whole meeting.
Well, we have the first motion, we have to defeat it.
No, you can refer it.
You know, we're not referring it.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion.
Yeah.
We could go with option two, um, contingent upon, um, acceptance by the group.
Of both clauses, both they agree with the four courts as well as providing a net.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, to me, that would, um, solve everybody's, yeah.
So, so what would the, um, the, the, the?
Option.
Option to contingent upon a meeting with the pickleball people, um.
Yeah.
And, and discussing.
Acceptance.
Acceptance of our, of our option.
Yeah, yeah.
At which point, if they don't, there's no invoice.
Then, then they, then, then we can start all over.
Yeah, yeah.
So, did I have that motion, Councilor Crox?
I thought I did it. I could do it again.
You need to amend your amendment.
Okay, but.
It was my motion.
Yeah.
With your friendly amendment.
Yeah, which just said contingent upon. Contingent upon acceptance by.
By the pickleball group. Okay, so do I have a second? Councilor Ross, do you have any more special ones?
Exactly as much as.
Just, just to clarify, that is with the contingency that they supply the metal net.
Yeah.
That's part of the motion? That was your amendment that you made?
Yeah, the, sorry, clarification. I was willing to make an amendment that they include the net. Um, but, uh, it was brought up that what if this doesn't work for them? What, what if us doing that, they need it resurfaced, not this? So, is, basically, it's contingent on them saying, yeah, this is good enough. If you want to include them fundraising for the net.
Dividing that, they have to supply it.
Then they would supply it, or if you want to leave that concept of the net out, I mean, that's, that's fine too.
I don't think we discussed that part because it was never in the option.
Yeah.
That's right.
So, all in favor?
Uh, okay. Can you just read the motion back? Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna give this a shot here. Resolve that council authorizes to repurpose, uh, one tennis court of the four pickleball courts with portable net systems and approximate cost of seventy-two fifty-six. The funds to come from the SLIF fund and bring that the pickleball players be approached to su- to supply the separator niche. And that this option two is contingent on agreement of the pickleball group.
Yeah.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
So eloquently do, I'm gonna add.
Yeah, repurpose, not resurface.
Repurpose?
Repurpose.
No.
Repurpose.
Repurpose, because we're changing the direction of the lines.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's the repurpose. The other one is, we think, no. No.
No.
Good, no. All right. I did hear SLIF fund.
Isn't it, it's good.
So all in favor of that motion?
Thank you.
Nice. Again, from our manager of development and engineering. The item is disposition of lot five, plan KAP eight-six-four-one-six, DL five-three-four, SDYD, PID zero-two-seven-four-six-eight-two-one-six to Argosy Construction Group. And the recommendation is that council direct staff to proceed with the disposition of this lot five. Plan KAP eight-six-four-one-six, DL five-three-four, SDYD, PID was zero-two-seven-four-six-eight-two-one-six to Argosy Construction. Group Incorporated for the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars plus GST. Do I have a motion? Councilor Thompson? Do I have a second? Or Councilor Hemmer? Discussion. All in favor? So, Carrie. Now, from our corporate services administration, the purpose, proposed budget amendment for additional staff support. And the recommendation is that council determines to authorize the budget amendment in two thousand and fifteen for additional administrative staff support in the amount of up to twenty thousand dollars to accommodate additional work required through the Freedom of Information Request. And the ombudsperson request. And a motion. Councilor Worshing. Councilor Hemmer. Discussion. Councilor Thompson?
I just have a couple of comments on that. Um, um, we have, uh, a request from Lauren Wise, who, according to his, um, website, is a criminal lawyer. Um, and he's asking for, uh, certain information. Um, in my opinion, this issue is going to have to be dealt with through the city's, uh, labor council. Um, to ensure that, I mean, I don't know, uh, uh, if this gentleman is, is attempting to, um, to build a case, a criminal case against, uh, the previous council, the current council, the members of our staff, we don't know. And, um, is twenty thousand dollars going to be enough? Uh, I don't think that it probably will be. Uh, and I think that that amount needs to be substantially increased. Further, um, there is, um, recommendation, um, of, of this twenty thousand dollars increase, um, is the choice of it either being taken from surplus or being taxed for. It would be, when the time comes, my recommendation that it not be taken from surplus, inasmuch as surpluses are for emergency, uh, capital expenditures that may arise, and regrettably, I would have to recommend that any funding that we require would have to be taxed for.
Councilor Worshing?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in, in fact, I, I definitely agree with you, Councilor Thompson. I, I don't believe we actually have the option of, uh, taking out a surplus. Um, I believe it has to be done through taxation. And, and the citizens of Grand Forks, I think, need to realize that as these requests come in, um, they're not always from individuals who live within the city limits. Sometimes they're from out of town, as you mentioned, uh, individuals from even further away from just, just out of town. Um, and then the burden falls on the taxpayer, and twenty thousand dollars to the city of Grand Forks to raise those revenues is a one percent tax increase. And, and if this is true, that, you know, twenty thousand isn't enough, we might be looking at a two percent tax increase next year just to cover the cost of dealing with these FOI requests. Yeah, and, and, and to me, it's, uh, it's kind of like, uh, you know, the, the people within this community, within the city boundaries, that pay the taxes, um, need to come together and, and say, you know, enough's enough, because that is a lot of money, and two percent, before we're looking at, um, wage increases through bargaining agreements. The cost of electricity going up, and the, the cost of everything going up. That in itself is a two percent tax increase, one to two percent depending, just to deal with this next year.
Councilor Hemmer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the staff if there's any recovery on our part with the FOI. This is, there, there's a set amount, I think it's thirty dollars to request an FOI from the city. But in this case, this FOI is requesting ten different, um, items, all in the same FOI. So are they limited to, um, X number of hours of staff time, um, to put together this FOI? And anything over and above that is charged to the person that is requesting this FOI?
Sure, sir. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, there is a component that is recoverable through the FOI process, but the, uh, based on the, uh, the Privacy Commissioner's, uh, uh, some of the rulings have suggested that it's up to the city to have your business in order, so your records management has to be in order. Uh, because of our fire, we're hoping that, uh, that it'll allow us some, uh, some latitude. But the Privacy Commissioner has made that very clear, that it's up to a city to have their, their business affairs and the records management in order. We just implemented a new process, uh, uh, called iCompass, um, a year, year and a half ago, so we could actually start to, uh, manage our records a lot better. So it was, and all this information would be readily available at the snap of, or basically, uh, any input onto the, uh, the computer system. But over the last, uh, the while we've been doing some records management, there's results of the fire. But we'll have to go through all of our fire documents that are in the boxes downstairs to deal with this, so. We're hoping that the, the Privacy Commissioner will rule, rule in our favor, but based on some of the, uh, past rulings that they have not ruled in the city's favor. They've suggested that the corporation should have, ought to have had their, their, uh, their records in order. So we can recover up to a portion of that, but then after that, it would have to be, uh, uh, the first three hours, I believe is the first three hours?
There's three.
Three hours we, the city provides for, for your staff time, and then after that, it goes into a, um, a cost. We would provide a, a cost estimate to the, uh, to the requester of the information. And then the requester could still continue on with the process, or they could choose to, uh, challenge that request through the Privacy Commissioner. And if the Privacy Commissioner says that's unreasonable, then the taxpayers have to bear that cost.
Just to continue, have we determined, uh, an estimate yet as to what this will cost us because of the, the in-depth information requested? And have we contacted, um, this criminal lawyer in Vancouver? Who's not saying who he's representing here in Grand Forks, uh, with that, um, assessed amount?
So, Mr. Mayor, at, at this point, uh, our, our, our corporate officer has, has looked at the amount of work based on the two reports that we're, uh, uh, looking at right now. And, and just, just providing an estimate to council at this point, what we're looking at. We don't know what this looks like if it's moving forward. We're hoping that it stays under that amount, and we hope that the costs will be recovered. Some of the other costs are not recoverable, and, and that's, uh, and that's, uh, that's guaranteed. Uh, the, the other costs are going to be borne by the community, so, um, we're, we're trying to get this together right now. We got the request in on May fifteenth. Uh, we're working towards that along with the other, uh, the other projects we've been working on. So, this does require us to simply stop and do, do that work now. We're required to provide this information by law.
Are you referring to both requests?
Both requests, absolutely. We, we don't have the choice in, in, uh, saying we can't or we, we won't be able to get that done. The city has a, a responsibility to do this.
And is the lawyer's, uh, request being entertained by our legal team of the city?
Uh, our, because we get the request in from a, a legal representation, we have to have that consultation with our, we have to consult with our lawyer on that.
So there's cost included?
Absolutely.
Is that all encompassed in the twenty thousand, out of twenty thousand?
Well, at this point right now, we'll bring back a report to council once we better understand, we should have a better understanding of those total costs within the next, within the next ten days, uh, we're hoping. Uh, but.
So we're not actually able to approve this?
Well, this is, this is because we're gonna have to bring in some staff right now to, to ascertain what we're looking at. Because this is a, this is a, like, the two requests we have are monumental, if I could just use that analogy.
So would it be not better to refer this back to staff until such a time that we, before amending any budget?
We have to undertake some expenditures at this point to undertake this process, so that's what we're just letting council know at this point. We have to, we may have to hire in somebody to do this things right now, so.
Councilor Thompson?
That's exactly, hmm, that's exactly the point that I was, was going to make, that, um, to me, this request and the ombudsman's request are, are people who are, are made by people who are, um, obstructionist. And in doing so, they're not allowing our staff to do the job for which they were hired and which we are paying for, uh, paying them for. And, uh, accordingly, we're gonna have to hire someone to come in, uh, and offer assistance. And I believe, if I read the memo correctly, uh, that is an estimated cost to bring in that additional body to do the research. And, um, uh, again, that is something that's going to, to be borne by our taxpayers, and, uh, uh, that's what happens when, when these kinds of requests are made. Uh, it's unfortunate.
Councilor Button?
I'd have to concur with Councilor Thompson on the fact that we might have to bring somebody in to do this, and through you, Mr. Mayor, staff. I'm just wondering if certain staff members are able to deal with this, or if it's a conflict for them because their names are included in the process.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, the, the department managers, uh, uh, that are required to, uh, to address this, uh, uh, this will be dealt with through, uh, the corporate officer will be, uh, has a responsibility. But i- if there is a conflict of interest for herself at that point, she would re- remove herself and refer it to, make declaration to myself according to policy. And then it would be referred to, uh, the deputy corporate officer who would then manage it. Uh, that, and then, uh, uh, additional to that, the chief financial officer would be responsible as well in this situation, and we're moving into tax season time. So this is where, uh, we also are replacing some temporary staff due to the fact that we've had to replace some staff, so. There is, there is some significant challenges for the organization, so. But along the line, absolutely, there will be no, uh, conflict of interest in that situation. They'll have to refer it to myself. And then if the council has any concerns with that, uh, we would follow through, uh, in respect to our proper channels for dealing with, uh, conflict of interest.
Are you any other questions or concerns?
I'd just like to comment that I'm extremely disappointed and frustrated with this, uh, between the ombudsman's request and, and this FOI ombudsperson, sorry, um, and the petition. It seems like a concerted effort by, um, a very few number of people to bring City Hall to its knees and, and to a grinding halt, and. And it's sad that so much money has to be spent in taxpayers' dollars to do this.
Are there any other questions? Councilor Ross.
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said tonight in terms of how disappointed I am in the number of requests and how shallow some of these requests are. I find it very petty. I think some of the people who are involved in this need to start playing pickleball. And it would be a great, much better use of your time. Also, we hear time and again, especially from the gallery, about fixed incomes in this city, and how we have to be careful about the taxpayers' dollar. And, and that, you know, generally, the average income in this city is lower than the average in British Columbia. And here we are, having to address this and spend $20,000 on hiring an extra person to address this issue. I find it very irresponsible. I would prefer not to support this, but I know that it's more than our staff can bear. And I'm just finding this is dismal, it's dark, it's depressing, and it's very disappointing. And I'm disappointed if, to know that even potentially this request is maybe even coming from somebody, I don't know, who may not even live in Grand Forks and even contribute to the tax base here. And next year, when we go to budget and we are criticized for putting a tax increase, I want the people of Grand Forks to know that it's not what we want to do, but we have to pay for this. And we have to pay for this, for this irresponsible, these irresponsible constant requests that are unnecessary.
I have a request to the gallery, and I do applause according to our workplace policy, please. Councilor Butler.
I'm just wondering if there's any way that we can cut down on some of the staff time for these requests. If in-camera minutes were to just be released, it would reduce the number of notes and minutes that had to be supplied. If that's something that council would entertain in order to cut down on the staff time for this.
Councilor Thompson.
I think if that were at all possible, that would have been made a recommendation made by our CAO. That request has come in from a lawyer, and I don't think we can circumvent the process by not fully responding to those requests. And in order to do that, it is going to take resources, our staff time, hiring an additional body, the cost of making all of the photocopies, so there's the cost of the paper, the toner, everything else that goes with it, that you're not going to recover. We can't recover, I don't believe, any of our legal fees that we're going to incur in responding to this. And so, and again, we don't know who this lawyer is representing. And so, you know, is someone that doesn't have the courage to come forward and say that we hired this man? Or is he lacking something to do with his time? And so he's maybe gone on the internet or Facebook and found out that there's a controversy in Grand Forks, and oh, golly gee, let's, let's do this? I don't know. But I don't think that this can be circumvented, any shortcut needed.
Any other questions? All in favor of council authorizing the budget amendment?
Reluctant.
I would like to put forward a motion that this budget amendment be funded through taxation next year, in year 2016.
Proceed, Ms. Mayor.
You'll need a second here.
Councilor Sheehan.
So, Mr. Mayor, according to our tangible capital asset policy, if we don't have, if the item is not tangible in nature and doesn't pass the threshold of council, I believe our auditors will make the recommendation that it does, I'll ask Mr. Shepherd to correct me if I'm wrong here, but the auditors will require us to make this a tangible capital asset? Or if it doesn't qualify for that, it'll have to come from taxation?
Not necessarily. The recommendation would be that it would be funded through taxation. Yes, our reserves and surplus have already been allocated for infrastructure and for capital assets, which we will be spending our reserve and surplus on capital assets.
Any questions? All in favor?
We did.
Tell them we're tagging the second.
So who is all in favor? All opposed?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, out of curiosity, we were just told there was no other option to fund it through taxation, and in fact, that motion in itself is redemptive. So how would you be in favor of lauding the $20,000 and then not finding a source to pay for, when there only was one source?
Because $20,000 out of the final amount, so there might be more.
But the funding source would remain the same regardless of the, regardless, okay.
So Carrie. On our information items, we have the UBCM. Asset management planning. The subject is 2015 Asset Management Planning Program Grant Approval Terms and Condition. And the recommendation is that council receive this for information. May I have a motion to receive it for information? So, Councilor Ross, you have a second. Councilor Sheehan.
Discussion? Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, I know I brought this up with council outside the meeting, but I'm still not quite clear. We had applied for a $50,000 grant for long-term strategic financial framework, and we've received a $10,000 grant. So I'm just, I wanted to know where the other grant of $40,000 was coming from, or if we've applied for another $40,000 grant?
Correct this to our CEO.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we've applied for two grants under the UBCM Strategic Priorities Fund. The first grant is the, or the planning grant, which was matching funds for 20, $10,000 plus $10,000, so the community would have to match $10,000. So we were awarded our $10,000 by UBCM. The second grant was a $50,000 grant for, I probably have the numbers on session, do I have the number, or is it $195,000? $195,000 for another grant to come from that we'll be working in partnership, I believe this is one we've been working in partnership with, the City of Naimo and the City of Kelowna, on a strategic approach to performance management. And this grant that we're talking about right now, that council is going to refer to, is one that we have matching funds for. And that will come forward in a work plan that will come before council in respect to that. So there will be no matching of those funds. The other one, there will be no $40,000, we're matching $10,000, and that will come forward in a work plan to council. Next grant, we're hoping to have the announcements on the, on the multi-utility projects and the strategic priority fund. So we're expecting those announcements that we made at UBCM this year in respect to the, council has a grant application right now for 1.000, how many million, Sasha? So 1.2 or 1.5 million?
1.3.
1.3 million for a multi-utility project and the $190,000 from the strategic priorities fund, which we feel as though, because we're required to report to the federal government on the performance of our asset, on how our assets are performing based on the funding we get from the, from the gas tax funds, we're hoping that this is going to be the catalyst for us to be able to move forward with performance management in not only saving money in our community from managing our assets more effectively, but also in the reporting mechanism that will become the, the reporting piece that we use throughout British Columbia. So we're anticipating getting this other funding.
Okay. So the second grant through the UBCM, you said, was for 192,000?
I think.
195,000, but the project was only set for 50,000, if I'm not sure.
Right, so when we applied for this grant, we applied for in matching funds, so they gave us 10,000. So we'll manage our work plan down, so we match those work, those dollars. So when council sees the work plan, it'll be a $20,000 project.
Not 50,000.
So we'll work backwards from what we got. We applied for the maximum, and we were given the 10,000, so now we're going to be working back with council.
Councilor Ross.
So then what you're saying is the $50,000 project for long-term strategic financial framework will now become a $20,000 project?
It will, and we will roll in the other amounts from the, the reporting of the, if we get the other grant, we'll roll some of those other elements into that other grant as well. We'll modify that work plan, it'll come before council.
Senator Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for you. I'm assuming when you apply for grant funding, and I've been a grant funder in my life, that you always go for the maximum amount, and then you hope for the maximum amount, and what you get, you work with accordingly. Is that your normal mode of operation when you're going for grant funding?
Mr. Mayor, we do ask for the moon and hopefully get something else, or maybe get the moon, but we do stretch it out as far as we can, so. But we've been very active in promoting asset management in British Columbia, so we're hoping that the province is really going to recognize Grand Forks in that respect for their leadership and the stewardship of our assets.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion? So Carrie. Our next item is the Beth's and Whispers of Hope, the transfer of the current lease on the multi-agency accommodation project known as MAP. And the recommendation is that council receive for discussion and consideration to transfer the existing lease from the HFHS EBC to Beth's and Whispers of Hope in the event that the HFHS EBC were to give notice to withdraw from the lease. May I have a motion? Councilor Butler, do I have a second here?
Discussion.
Are you seconding?
Yeah.
Councilor Thompson, second. Okay, Councilor Thompson.
I'm absolutely, I'm absolutely amazed that the Chair of the Whispers of Hope would attach his signature to this request. And as much as, on April the 15th, and these are from the Grand Forks Gazette, he makes a comment that he doesn't know how they can trust council moving forward. Again, on April the 1st, he comments, "If the city is flip-flopping like this now, what are they going to do in three and a half years from now?" And on April the 15th, by way of a letter to the editor, Jake Raven thanks the Gazette on reporting on the wrecking of MAP by city council. And this individual wants us to consider a transfer of a lease should Habitat for Humanity Southeastern B.C. give notice of their intention to withdraw and cancel the lease. I'm done.
Councilor Butler.
I can understand Councilor Thompson's disgruntlement that the comments were made. It's hard to, hard to hear those things. One person, though, I don't know can be held responsible for a whole project. This project has benefited our community greatly. There's many people that appreciate having it there. And I think it would, I think it would serve the community best if council could find a way to talk with these individuals and work through hurtful statements that have been made in the best interests of a project that's benefiting our community.
Counselor Croft.
I'll see what works now. Yeah, I was just gonna comment that I agree with the fact that, like, one individual's actions, but this specific individual is the Chair of the Board. So the Chair, just like the mayor speaks on behalf of the Board, so that's where my concern.
Counselor Ross.
If we look at this letter, it says they're writing to ask council to confirm that the city will transfer that lease to Whispers of Hope and Beth in the event that. So I would propose that the council will consider transferring the lease when and if, or when HFHS EBC does withdraw. Because it's just saying, you know, confirming that we will. Well, we will consider it when they do.
The recommendation is only for discussion and consideration in any event. Counselor Sheehan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I definitely concur with Councilor Ross there. I think this is a little premature at this point, dealing with this. I personally don't know what that lease would look like. I don't know how the structure would be set up. I know how the structure was set up before with B.C., or not B.C., I was in Habitat for Humanity at the top, and everybody else almost working to the side, but maybe a little below them, and them being the, you know, the strong force that's been around forever, and the one that you could definitely count and lean on because of their widespread ability and solidity. And I just would have to say that I think we should fast-forward and get to it as well. I think this definitely is very premature.
To address it to our CEO, Mr. Allen, there hasn't been any notification of Habitat being able to give notice.
Not in writing, but we've had a meeting that they were suggesting that they were going to be pulling those. We want to be prepared for that for council, so this is not last second that they're hearing this. So we want to have it on the agenda, because there's also been the request, you know, us to respond to them. So we're letting, you know, letting council's position be known that maybe we'd consider it in the event that Habitat does return, or say that they're terminating the lease.
So, but we're still one step behind?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, my, I just wanted to clarify that my concerns and the things that I made do not relate to the works done by Whispers of Hope or by Beth's, but with one of the individuals who is speaking on behalf of one of those organizations. And I just wanted to make that pretty clear.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? So having said that, Counselor Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How would you like us proceed with this, then, to?
Just for a decision and a consideration at this point.
And then put an action on the floor, or just?
Until such a time that Habitat responds back.
So leave it be?
Yes. So all in favor? So Carrie. The Boundary Peace Initiative, subject matter is the invitation to the Spring Conference on May the 30th, 2015, at the Slavonic Senior Citizens Center. The recommendation is council receive for information, and the members of council are invited to attend. So may I have a motion to receive for information? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Sheehan, who is it? Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am the treasurer of this organization, and I will be attending for that conference for the morning session. I will be attending Alice Glanville's memorial at the date of that day. And if no other members of council are available to attend, and with your concurrence, I could bring greetings from the city.
Any other discussion, or is no? All in favor of that motion, then? So Carrie. Our Canada Day Committee, subject matter is the invitation to participate in the opening ceremonies for the Canada Day celebrations, July the 1st, 2015. The recommendation is council receive for information, and the mayor is to advise if he is able to be the emcee and the entertainment coordinator for the Canada Day celebrations from 11:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. And yes, it will be my honor. And yes, it will be my honor to do that. Further that, two council members are requested to assist at the cutting of the cake at twelve thirty p.m. May I have a motion first to receive this for information? Counselor Ross, Counselor Crogg? And now, discussion. Who will be wanting to attend? Counsel, Counsel Butler?
I'll be attending.
Any other counselors?
I would like to attend GFI's event at the same time. Are we putting a flag, are we putting a float in for the city into the parade? Are we walking in the parade?
Oh, we're in the Christmas parade.
The parade's broken. We can throw ice cream, we can throw popsicles.
Oh.
We'll throw something else.
We'll throw something.
Is there anybody else? Well, I guess we can discuss this. The invitation is out there. So at this point, if there's no other further discussion? All in favor? Moving along with more information items. Mr. Jack Koochin, subject matter is a letter regarding the solution for Grand Forks Water System, i.e. district metering. Motion is, the recommendation is for council to receive this for information. May I have a motion to do so? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Ross, any discussion? Counselor Butler?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mr. Koochin for his letter. And I think district metering is an interesting option that I like the fact that it's been put forward to council by a member of the public and it's something that I've been looking into, so thank you.
Any other questions or debate? So may I have all in favor of that motion to receive? So carry. Our next item is Nadine Heiberg, a letter of reply to a city letter issued for unsighting premise. The recommendation is that council receive for information and refer it to staff. May I have that motion? Counsel Rushegan, Counselor Thompson? I guess we're gonna have some discussion.
Have they issued the check yet?
All in favor? So carry. Our next item is from Gloria Koop. Subject matter is a letter regarding dialogue and participation from the community. And the recommendation is that council receive it for information. May I have a motion? Counsel Rushegan, Counselor Thompson? Do we have a discussion? All in favor? So carry. Our next item is from Mr. Frank Traveri in regards to communication regarding administrative compensation. And the recommendation is that council receives this for information. May I have a motion? Counsel Rushegan, Counselor Hammett? Discussion, Counselor Butler?
I just need to apologize, it's been a really long day of council meetings. And I have read this, but I remember Mr. Traveri's letter that he, he found a reference on a provincial website that stated we needed to be providing more information regarding contracts over one hundred and twenty-five thousand, that that was provincial. Is that what it stated, and are we doing that?
We're required to actually report out on our statement of financial information, Mr. Mayor. Everything over seventy-five thousand. And actually, in our, in our, in vendors, I believe it's. I guess our tax probably on that.
We report all payments to suppliers over twenty-five thousand.
Every year. And that's June.
Satisfied with this?
I'm just wondering, this Public Sector Employees Council Secretariat Executive Compensation Disclosure Statements, how does that pertain to us?
As provincial, we deal with our community charter on the statement of financial information. We're required to report, like I said, everything over twenty-five thousand dollars to every vendor that we report, that we, that we spend money to. And then every, every civil employee that makes over seventy-five thousand dollars is reported out as well.
Is that sufficient? Counsel Crogg?
Yeah, I think it was summed up quite nicely in the Corporate Officers' Response Letter. I think that just lays it out, everything from the seven hundred, or the seventy-five thousand, sorry. Sorry, I forgot. I think it was well laid out in the Corporate Officers' Letter, which was a reply to that previous letter. And same.
Any other questions or debate? So all in favor of that motion? So carry. We'll now move on to our Bylaw Section. And the Manager of Development and Engineering Services, subject matter to amend the current zoning bylaw by rezoning property located at eight thirty-two sixty-fourth Avenue from the current R-one single and two-family residential zone to the R-four rural residential zone. And the recommendation is that council give third and final reading to City of Grand Forks Zoning Bylaw Amendment Number sixteen oh six dash E-three, two thousand and fifteen.
I will move third reading.
Counselor Thompson, do I have a second? Counsel Rushegan? Any discussion?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Mayor, at the public hearing, I believe it was Mr. Lyler?
He's present.
Yes, who attended, as well as Mr. Galley, who attended. And at that point, Mr. Lyler mentioned that there's individuals who may not be in favor of this rezoning that were unable to attend the meeting. And he said he may be able to bring those individuals to speak today. And I'm just curious to know whether or not that is the case. But in doing so, we would have to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow him to speak, which would be higher than our hierarchy of motions, so I'd make that motion.
All second. Any unanimous? So, are all in, are all in favor of that motion and unanimous?
I just have to question, I have a question, please, for our CEO. For you?
Go ahead.
If we were to do this, does that prejudice the public hearing? And would we have to go back if we advertise?
Good question. Good question, there. If they have that planned, or, you know, Mr. Smith, he would be actually the person that would best answer that question, but it is a good question. The, the, actually, Mr. Mayor, if I understand, you, you, no information, no new information could be brought forward outside the public hearing, but I'd have to clarify with Mr. Smith.
Well, he left.
He's gone.
He's gone. But I believe that the charter is specific in that that you are not allowed to hear any new information once the public hearing is closed. The, the information, according to the legislation, is you are not allowed to hear any new information. So I believe that it would actually prejudice the, the public hearing.
Counselor Hammett?
I thought that there, when we discussed this during the public hearing and decided that we would suspend it or, or table it and bring it back so that Mr. Lyler could have that opportunity to bring in information.
I recall that statement.
Mr. Mayor, you could, you could.
I would say we just defeat this motion, people. And refer to later.
I think you'll have to reschedule another public hearing in respect to that?
If council feels that we're gonna have another public hearing. We would have to defeat this motion and? Counselor Butler?
Is, but I don't know, maybe there isn't anybody here that wanted to speak to it.
But he can't tell us.
Yeah, he can't unless we.
You can't tell us.
No, but they can quack like a duck. I think that has to end the charter.
No, they can't hear anymore. No, because they can't hear any new information.
So, but what else? Rushegan was stating that the fact that if we allow things to speak to see if there is any other people, is not furnishing any more information. He was just stating, so we have to know, are we?
I think that's a fair statement, though, if there's many people that want to speak about it, then council could, they could actually then make a decision to table it or defer.
Counselor Ross?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm not asking for new information, I'm asking for old information. I, I don't, I don't remember, and I can pull it up, but that's gonna take too, too much time. I thought when this request came, that he was going to farm using organic practices?
That's, well, that's not the issue, that's on the table right now.
Well, it actually is, because there are, there are some people here who are, are against the rezoning and they're making allegations here of, you know, chemical use and GMO plants being, being planted. Unless this fellow is planning on growing corn, soy, canola, or sugar beet, then that's not possible. So I just wanted.
But we've had a public hearing, and the question here now is, we will have to have another public hearing to hear. But first, we have to find out from the gentleman, which council will have to approve the motion that we allow him to speak if there is, are any other individuals that are prepared to come forward? Because if not, then we just proceed with this motion.
Kind of funny, Mr. Mayor, and just that question, that we do nothing more. It just prejudice the.
Mr. Mayor, I would not recommend that we hear from anybody in the public in relation to this topic at this time. I recommend that if council wants to proceed to third reading, you can suspend, you can suspend fourth reading, and that takes more time to have the individual potentially contact our organization and those other, those other individuals to do that. But I just, I just don't, I want to caution council on, on manipulating the rules when it comes to the public hearing process, because it is one that is very, very sacred when it comes to the rules.
So what would be the advantage of doing third and final? If we're just gonna remove final, why don't we just table this motion at this point to later date?
That's what I was gonna suggest, is that we refer this to our next regular meeting of council. And in the interim, perhaps our CEO can consult with and find out whether or not to allow more information is gonna prejudice.
Would it not be more pertinent to a committee of the whole meeting?
Mr. Mayor, if, if the situation were, what I'll do is, if council wants to table it, I will find out the proper process and I'll bring it back to council to let you know how to best handle the change in direction.
Okay. Counselor Butler?
Just further to what Counselor Ross was stating, I'm kind of confused as to what they're going to be proposing for this site now. And I do have a few questions for the people that are putting forward this application and we haven't had an opportunity to speak with them yet. It would be nice to be able to talk with the, with the applicants to find out exactly what their, their plans are. And there'd been mention, I thought, of them growing a market garden, but then there was complaints about them operating a market there, so I'm not sure if they're just growing vegetables or if they're actually selling it there.
Point of order, the issue now is, are we gonna table it? And then we can discuss it with the individuals.
I'll make the motion to refer this.
Okay, so you're going to amend the motion because we were gonna do third and final reading? The motion is on the table for third and final reading.
But we could defer it, which would trust that motion. So should I make that motion, I'm seconding it?
Any other discussion on? So all in favor? So carry. Our Manager of Operations are the subject matters election, Utility Regulatory Amendment Bylaw two thousand and fifteen. And the recommendation is council give first three readings to Bylaw two thousand and fifteen Electrical Utility Regulatory Amendment Bylaw. Counselor Rushegan, Counselor Crogg? Discussion? Counselor Rushegan?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, if I could ask through you, Mr. Mayor, to our CEO or whoever's responsible, just to highlight the changes or what's changed from the previous bylaw to this bylaw to so the community could understand as well as us in greater detail? Just a synopsis, please.
Mr. Mayor, I could pass it over to our new Manager of Operations. Or? The fight over who works the call.
So this was introduced at the Committee of the Whole Meeting on May fourth. And basically, it was to, to give the business owners, that are renting their business to tenants, the right to ask to have the power turned off. So this was asked by quite a few of the landlords in the area to do this. So it's, it's available under the Community Charter as long as by bylaw, certain rules are followed. So it's laid out in the agenda here. So some of the changes were the definition of customer, which was added. The date which the bylaw was. The number of the bylaw. Occupier was added to the bylaw as the change order at the beginning of the end of it. Under four point one, just the disconnect was added for, to allow us to do that. Also to repeal the current bylaw nineteen seventy-five and the amended bylaw two thousand and nine. Number two thousand and nine. There was some numbering changes with one point three to one point one zero. And then some deletions from the old bylaw one point three to one point five.
If I may, just permit it through our CEO, Mr. Allen. Mr. Reed, does this put the city at any liability risk as an infringement on human rights by disconnecting the contract?
No.
Sorry, no, it doesn't. The Community Charter allows for this. So by bylaw, you just have to give everyone affected the opportunity to come before council.
So, Mr. Mayor, we've heard from customers that, that have rented out their buildings and they maybe left with a several thousand dollars worth of electricity owing on that. They haven't had the ability to disconnect those tenants. Those tenants have left the heat on and left it over through the winter and, and left those owners with these enormous electrical bills. This will allow the owners a little bit more control to actually remove the tenants under the Residential Tenancy Act and then within the rules that we offer within our local government as well.
I'm just concerned with the city.
Yeah.
So then Schedule C was mostly amended by bylaw two thousand and nine. So that was added in there, so that's updated. So just have the one bylaw now. So that was, after Schedule C, that was about all the changes recommended there. So just basically bring in the two current bylaws to the one two thousand and fifteen bylaw?
What does the city consider a reasonable loss?
We would, from our perspective, I mean, the charter would define that, so I would ask our Manager of Operations to clarify that. But in this section, the Residential Tenancy Act will prevail as well. So the owner, the, the building owner won't just have the unilateral ability to disconnect. They'll have to prove to the city that they've actually met the Residential Tenancy Act for service.
There is just cause.
There is just cause. But we won't be in a situation where we're just acting ad hoc, because we don't want to put ourselves at risk when it comes to that as well. And we may declare that they are responsible under the whole Residential Tenancy Act to do that. But the same is with water services, sewer services, other services that the homeowners pay for. When the, when the renting goes out, they, they do fall under the Residential Tenancy Act.
So what timelines does that encompass as far as a reasonable loss just?
Approximately about thirty days.
Oh, that long?
Yeah. And it would only come into effect if the bill was unpaid, so there was overdue.
So a delinquent user would have another thirty days to be. So a delinquent user would have another thirty days to be delinquent. No cloud, man. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, thank you. You can keep that. All right, so we have a motion. To first three readings.
So our recommendation is for the first three readings of this bylaw, we have a motion on the table. If there's any more discussion, otherwise, all in favor?
So carry. We now move on to our late items, and the first one will be given to us by our manager of development and engineering. Regarding the grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've received a notification that the Canada one hundred and fifty infrastructure program is offering a legacy grant. It is going to be in the amount of a hundred and fifty million dollars over two years. It involves projects that rehabilitate existing community facilities. The city had originally committed two hundred thousand dollars from reserves. Sorry, let me step back for a second. One of, one of the examples of a strong project that would fit underneath this infrastructure program would be the addition of the spray park at City Park. It's a favorable, favorable project. So originally, the city committed two hundred thousand dollars from reserves for this project, and then two hundred thousand would be coming from Rotary, from funding opportunities, opportunities, opportunities that they've come with. The amount of this grant is up to a maximum of five hundred thousand, so if it was a million dollar project, we could ask for five hundred thousand dollars. It's not to exceed fifty percent of the total cost of the project. There can no, be no costs incurred before April first of two thousand and sixteen. And it's basically attributes of a strong project that leave a meaningful lasting legacy, resulting from the one hundred and fiftieth birthday of Canada. So we thought that applying for the spray park would be a good project to go for for this grant. So we just need a resolution from counsel to proceed with the application for funding.
If I may just ask the question, so by applying for this grant, it could possibly alleviate costs to the city for, the costs for the spray park. We would be getting it through grant and council. So may I have a resolution, a motion for the application of this grant? Counselor Crogg, Counselor Thompson, any other discussion or debate? Counselor Ross.
So just from clarification, and what I'm understanding is, no funds can be spent on this project prior to April twenty sixteenth. So if we spend the money as a city to go ahead with the spray park now, it's not like the city can be reimbursed after the grant is successful.
Nope.
So are we entertaining going ahead with this funding application, and therefore withdrawing our, the funds that we have already allocated towards the, towards, towards the spray park? And then is what, it may then delay the building of the spray park?
Yes, it will delay it, but in all concerns and best interest, it would be better for us to try to get some free money if we could. Now, it'd be up to counsel to make that decision. Our CEO, Mr. Owen.
Mr. Mayor, the, the, the project timelines, the grant timelines, the, the grant application would actually have to be in, the federal government announced it last week. The grant applications have to be in by June seventeenth, I believe, which doesn't afford counsel much time to consider the priorities. The, the, the staff, our manager spoke with the representative for the Rotary, and the Rotary wasn't necessarily in favor of delaying the project. But I think if we could, if we could move down the path of, of, of getting a resolution, apply for the grant. If it looks like we're, if it's going to be favorable for the city, then we can talk to the Rotary about how this best looks. But it also allows counsel the ability to pull back. The financial plan can stay the way that it is, but if, we would report back to counsel on progression of how this, how this is starting to unfold. We don't want to upset the, the efforts that Rotary has undertaken, but in the, in the, in the interest of the city, we'd like to have a project that we could go after, some funding in this respect, in this, for this funding that's been announced by the federal government. Because we don't own the recreational facilities when it comes to the, when it comes to the rec center and the swimming pool and whatnot, it doesn't allow us the ability to do that, so the regional district can also apply as well.
Counselor Crogg.
That's okay. I'll talk loud and slow. Now, um, it's that catch twenty-two thing. I want to apply for the grant, but if, if we don't get a decision until twenty sixteen, and the decision is no, then all of that time is gone. So I would like to apply for the grant and still proceed with where we're going as far as the spray park goes. And then if it looks like it's going to be successful, we can deal with it then. But if we don't know, then we can continue on, but it gives us that, that option and doesn't delay the project unnecessarily.
Your CEO, Mr. Owen.
Mr. Mayor, if it pleases counsel, we can hold a, build a pickleball stadium. So I'm going to say, we would have the ability to look at some funds, so we could actually, because this is relatively short timeline for counsel, we could actually ask to hold a special meeting to discuss some of the options with counsel before the, before the timeline is up. But we're just asking counsel then to hold another council meeting to discuss this. So we could put this back off to staff to bring back a request for another council meeting, and then look at some of the other things, because of pickleball, it may be a good way of alleviating some costs, allowing them to get that, allow the Rotary to proceed, but also, we could better measure the, the financial impacts of the recommendation for counsel to consider.
Counselor Ross.
Yeah, we, I didn't see this until it's a late item, so I'm not sure. Is there, we only can apply for one project? Is there only one project? It is, right. Because it would be, if we, seeing we're, I, I'm really hesitant in delaying this water park and saying to, to Rotary, yeah, we support it with that money, and, and then pulling back and saying, we're hoping for, to fund it. I know you're talking about free money here, and that we can, you know, we can loosen up that two hundred thousand dollars to pay some legal bills. And, um, and can we look at other, other projects, like, you know, the community garden? You know, that's, that's crawling along, because we, we can't fund it. That community garden is something that can really be super fabulous. And, pardon? Is it just regional district?
Yeah, they have it in place for the cities and the suburbs of the city.
And in kind support.
Some in kind support, but I see they're still looking for funds.
For the RDK, we can also apply that same grant for that.
All righty, then, never mind.
Must the spray park also falls under our asset management?
It is, it is something to consider.
As we're trying to reduce our assets, we're requiring more. Counselor Rashigan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm in the same boat, I think, as everybody else here, it's kind of, you want to go forward, but you want the free money, and it's hard to decide here. So, so I would suggest that we, we do hold another regular meeting, and maybe see if there's other options available or out there, and we may settle back on this. But at least it buys us some time and, and staff some time to look at other possibilities.
So our motion right now on the table is to apply for the grant, so are we doing a twofold motion, where we incorporate or going to another meeting and just deferring this?
We, we defer it, I guess would be the word, just defer it, yeah.
Counselor Crogg.
I get to talk before deferral. Through you to staff, are the rules that no part of a project can be funded? The reason I'm asking is, we have a spray park concept. Can we expand on that spray park? So, so commit to building a smaller one. Phase two, is what I'm trying to ask. So we build this one and then get more money?
Mr. Mayor, we'd be able to bring that implication forward. We'd have time to, to look into this and call the folks that are doing the grant, under the grant program, so bring back these, these questions back, so I'd ask our manager of operations to bring forward the answer to that question.
So for Elizabeth Pedder.
Oh, yeah, the second, please.
So, do we have a second, Counselor Hammond? So any other discussion? All in favor, deferring it? So carry.
We'll bring the honor.
Okay, our last late item is the press release from an in-camera item, and this is for immediate release. City of Grand Forks, city council voted in favor filing an application to the court for declaration of disqualification against Counselor Julia Butler. The petition was filed pursuant to section one eleven of the community charter, application to court for declaration of disqualification and pursued to section one ten, restrictions on participation in conflict. Counsel will move forward with the petition to protect the best interests of the organization, and will proceed with the filing of the application to the Supreme Court immediately. Although counsel will not be able to speak further on this, as the petition will be filed with the courts, counsel wanted to be respectful of the process and let the citizens of Grand Forks be aware of the situation. So may I have a motion to do this press release? Second. Counselor Hammond.
Yes, to receive.
We're receiving it.
Yeah.
So, all in favor? All opposed? Opposed parties are the mayor and Counselor Butler. Questions from the public and the media. A gentleman in the rear.
Ray, Ray Hanson. I had a couple of questions regarding the transition housing study, and a comment about the pickleball. Regarding the transition housing study, my understanding was that part of the study, and I regret I haven't had a chance to read it, was to include a needs analysis in the study. In other words, what is the need out there for transition housing? Is, is, is that part of the study?
I will direct that to our CEO.
Mr. Mayor, I would expect that to become part of the terms of reference for the, for the steering committee, to, to generate that information as part of their brainstorming session.
My other question regarding that is, why is the city taking this project on when it's already part of a strategic plan of a nonprofit organization in the city?
Mr. Mayor, the, the discussion with counsel was determining, because the, the request was for the, for the lease and the expansion at seven two one two Riverside, with counsel was taking a step back, their discussion was related to the long-term commitment to the, to the property, and to determine the, the number of transitional housing bids that were required in the community, and what they related to, so whether it was mental health, Sunshine Valley, you know, the, the, presented, all the different elements of it. So the counsel decided to take a step back and take a look at this. So counsel is, is part of the partnership in this, whether it was with seven two one two Riverside, or any other location, the community council will be part of the partnership in this process. So it's typical that they, they determine what they need, and then make the determination if they're going to continue on with partnership, so. So I hope that clarifies it.
Is that your question?
Regarding the pickleball and the tennis court upgrade, Christina Lake, a few years back, had to resurface their tennis courts, and they were able to find a product that is laid down, a handmade project, product that goes right over the court. And as far as I know, that has worked out well. So it may be working.
Are there any other questions? Gentlemen, second classroom.
Good evening. My name is Bob Kendall. I just wanted to make a comment about the letters that I read in both the Bounder Settle and Gazette regarding Counselor Butler's letters about conflict of interest. And I noticed that she speaks for both herself and you in those letters. I'm just wondering if there's a reason why you don't speak to them yourself.
I, as mayor, take the high road, because I don't represent only a certain amount of citizens, I represent all the citizens of this city. And if I am included in that letter, it is not by my choice.
Thank you. I just noticed that you were named as in the letter to the Bounder Settle, for sure.
Fully recognized. The lady in the first row.
Yes, Beth Tripp. I'm not really familiar with all this going on here, but from what I understand, it's, it's, will there be legal costs incurred to pursue, is this the removal of Counselor Butler from the, from the counselor position? Will there be legal costs incurred in that?
To best answer this, we are at a preliminary stage, and we cannot discuss this any further right now. There's just an application being filed. It will be up to the court to decide, and at this point, we cannot discuss it any further, because it is in the court's hands.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen back.
Yeah, in the agenda and in the meeting, you referred to the-
For the record.
Pardon me?
For the record.
For the record, Les Johnson, taxpayer, GFTV. The twenty thousand dollars that staff is asking possibly to need to satisfy the FOI request, the ombuds person action. The agenda goes into great detail on the FOI request from a lawyer in Vancouver, but it just makes a mention of the ombuds person. Could you explain, what's the ombuds person action? How, what does that mean? Who's brought that? Can you tell us that?
Unable to discuss anything regarding the ombuds person, that is a waiver that is put on by the ombuds person. We are not allowed to discuss anything public regarding that. Any other questions? Gentlemen in front.
Craig Lindsay with the Grand Forks Gazette. Hi, I'm wondering for the, how they voted, how everybody voted for the pickleball option two. Who voted yes?
We can get that for, did we refer that?
Yeah, with conditions.
Yeah. There, there was no real vote on decision that was referred, I believe, we're tabled to another meeting to get their input.
Was there an option two with the?
Yeah, with the contingency to deal with the- Yeah, get that for sure. To the gentlemen in the back.
Good evening, your worshiping counselors. My name is Nigel James. I'm a resident of Grand Forks. Firstly, I'd like to make a comment, and that is the, the downtown beautification has gone very well, in my opinion. It's cost us money, but it's, I think, well worth it. And likewise, the street marking, remarking is, is good. It's a pity that winter will come along, and we'll have to do it again next year, but and my, the point I really want to make is concerning bylaws, which has been on the agenda tonight. I understand that before the bylaw officer can go and have look at an unsightly premises, he must, there must be a letter on the file to the city from, from somebody. And he can't initiate the, the action himself. It's a slow process, and what is more, people tend to loathe, be loathe to write letters anyway, especially if it's against a neighbor, perhaps, because the news might get out. especially if it's against a neighbor perhaps, because the news might get out. The bylaw officer is the final arbiter anyway of whether the premise is slightly or unsightly. He makes the decision, and no doubt there's a process for doing it, as advised by the council. It's just that I feel that it'd be far more prudent and fast if we gave the bylaw officer the wherewithal to, as he drives around the city, sees an unsightly premise, and therefore he initiates some sort of action. The action is, depends on the council, whether they did, what you decide. We might just try and bang on the door and give them friendly words, words of warning, saying, hey, come on, sort it out, otherwise you'll get an official letter and something else will happen. It's just that that would be a faster, much better way of doing things, in my view. But of course, it would mean changing the bylaw, as I understand. The other one, another item about the, about the bylaw is presumably the, the bylaw officer, as he goes around the city, can see unregistered vehicles or scrap vehicles or whatever in various people's yards, unsightly or otherwise, and therefore could do something about it as well. And it's just that I feel that that's a much more efficient way of using staff and also giving him the much more authorities to get on and do his job. Thank you.
Recommendation so acknowledged. Thank you. Council Hammond.
I believe we've just recently amended bylaw for the noise bylaw, the deer feeding bylaw and unsightly premise bylaw to allow a bylaw officer to take action without, without specific notification or letters of complaint. Am I wrong, Amma?
I don't know if we've got a bylaw officer more teeth in our, or it'd be something that we have to look into.
The deer feeding council's asked for that to be enforced.
But the rest of them?
The rest of them are still desirable according to the council policy and bylaw.
Okay, so it was just the deer feeding law?
Yeah.
So council wishes to do so, we can amend that bylaw to give it more teeth. Gentlemen, Council Butler and then the gentleman in front.
Not sure what the solution is to that, but I definitely am against the idea of having to have neighbors turn in neighbors. I don't like to, to see that happening. It definitely doesn't create a, a good atmosphere in the neighborhood to have your, your neighbor reporting you whether anonymously or not and discuss, yeah, it's something that I think we should look at.
Gentlemen in the front row.
My name is June Cook. I just wanted to know if I understood correctly is Councilor Butler going to be able to continue to sit as our councillor until the court hearings are going to happen?
She will still be performing at this point in time until the court decision renders it otherwise.
She can continue on as.
She is still, she is still in her seat at this point.
I'd like to remind this council, Councilor Butler received the second highest vote count during the last election and you take a direction that if you want to create more unhappiness within the public, this is the way to proceed.
I would, I'd be, I'd be pleased to refrain from applying.
I did have one other thing to say, too. If the court's, if the court action vindicates Councilor Butler, how will she, how will she be treated from that point on?
At this point, I'm unable to discuss something like that. That is a, an assumption which we cannot base in the assumptions. I would love to be able to answer it, but I can't. Are there any other questions from the gallery? You're not in the gallery.
No, no, but I just wanted to say, I'm just, was there a second item coming, released from in-camera? No, I thought.
Preceding that was the second late item?
Two late items.
Yeah, two late items, but two in-camera items.
That were being released, yeah.
I thought it was two in-camera items.
There was already a press release today, Mr. Mayor, regarding conflict of interest.
Okay, that's.
That we didn't, we didn't release it.
No, it was released today, I think, as a result of the council.
Okay.
Members of the gallery wouldn't necessarily know.
No, that it's been released, okay.
Are you referring to the Young Anderson?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There is another press, a press release from in-camera regarding our legal team for the city, the Young Anderson report. It is going to be in the press release. What it contains, I unfortunately do not have the information in front of me. I probably should, but I don't, so. My apologies. Are there any other questions? Lady in the front.
My name is Gina Burrows. I've been a resident of seven four nine eight Valley Heights Drive and municipal taxpayer for the last twenty-five years. I have fourteen years of provincial enforcement experience and over twenty years of experience in administration and responsibilities for annually auditing up to twenty-one million dollars in revenues. I've attended all but one of this council's regular meetings, reviewed all community of the whole meetings. I have read about three thousand pages of agendas, meeting minutes, and all two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen FOI releases and familiarized myself with more information than I ever thought I wanted to know, but thanks. Most importantly, though, my husband and I have chosen to raise our daughters here, which is why I'm speaking today. Mayor Count Conrad, on May fourth, Ms. Butler submitted a report that was received by council. Yet the report itself was inaccurate and misleading in referring to a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar legal fee expenditure. The report is evidence of a lack of understanding of property conveyance procedures and continuing lack of willingness by Ms. Butler to seek understanding from senior staff before interpreting a report in a knowledge vacuum. Although Ms. Butler verbally clarified that the two hundred and thirty thousand dollars were monies held in trust for the purchase of the current map property, the report was still received for information by council in its unclarified state. This forms a part of the public record, and if a citizen were not have, were not to have witnessed the verbal clarification or the subsequent meeting minutes, then they may be led to believe that the information report is accurate. Secondly, Ms. Butler also mentions the money spent on consulting fees two calendar years ago, but doesn't offer any expert explanation of how the information garnered from the necessary consultations might have been alternately received at a lesser cost in two thousand and thirteen, a year in which Ms. Butler was a recreation program employee and a self-employed yard care worker. My question is to you, Mr. Mayor. What is your standard for councillor reports that are received for information? Do you expect councillors to be accurate, clear and concise in reports that are approved for receipt? Or will you receive any reports submitted? Thirdly, in Ms. Butler's report, she asked for the application of section one seventy-three in regards to the CAO severance package. Her report continues to show a lack of understanding of contract law and its application. Ms. Butler continues to inappropriately quote statute in what appears to be an attempt to give herself credibility without any regard for the statute's intent. In my opinion, this behavior is pretentious, self-righteous, and damaging to the credibility of the community. Mr. Mayor, in your leadership role, how do you plan on addressing the issues of necessary educational training for councillors? Issues that include lack of meaningful consultation with and the undermining of senior staff? I hear patronizing comments like if staff did their homework and then calling prudent spending policing. Rogue behavior that appears to exclude the collaboration with the majority of your council that is imperative for the betterment of the community and most importantly, how do you plan on reversing the damage this behavior has had on the credibility and reputation of this community and your legacy? Thank you for your consideration, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not able to respond to all your questions, but I will respond to one of them. I label Council Butler's actions as rookie errors. You have a lot of years of experience, as you have said. Unfortunately, this council, the new ones, only have six months. So there is that possibility of human error and rookie error, and that's what I base this on. Given enough time, possibly there could have been major changes. But if the public does not give this council enough time and opportunity to prove themselves and expect changes and results immediately, then the public is mistaken. Does that answer your question?
I'll send you then an email, too, so that you get the rest of it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do we have any other questions from the gallery? We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor? This meeting is adjourned.